Before we go to public, just a minute. Teresa, let me ask you, it's been said that this meeting was not being transparent. Was this meeting posted properly with all the details?
It was posted a week ago.
Okay. Do you know what date it was posted?
It goes on board, but it was very close to a week ago.
But it wasn't over Friday night, just before close?
Uh, no.
No, okay, because that's what the opinion is. And it's done legally? There's nothing about this being that's not legal?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Tom Doyle.
Yeah, Tom Doyle, 128, hi. I came here to speak about agenda item number one, about the raises for city officials. I'm not going to say anything against giving out raises to city officials, but I can't really say anything about giving out raises for city officials. I don't know the first thing about this. As you mentioned, it was posted last week. I actually just found out about it yesterday. I would have liked to have known how much this is going to cost the city in total and who gets the raises. I'm just completely in the dark on it. So, I mean, I wish that the next time this happens, I wish that we'd be able to know more in advance about who's getting what kind of raises. I don't know, and how much this costs the city. Is this going to be $10,000 a year? Is this going to be $1 million a year? Who knows? It's good that it was posted, I think it was posted on December 29th. I think it's good that you're posting it at least nearly a week in advance, but I'd ask for even more transparency. You know, please just let the taxpayers know. I sometimes come here and speak out in favor of spending taxpayer dollars, sometimes I speak out against, but I have no information about this. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Andrew Howe.
Andrew Howe, 31, South Street Extension. I thought myself whether or not I was going to come up and actually have this, but these comments, but they need to be made. On social media, leaders, three of them, posted things negative about this whole transparency thing in city government and, you know, the city of all heart, but yet, you, how can you, if you have no respect for Ken, by all means, have respect for the chair? Was there an issue with, on November 1st, when we had almost the same special meeting? Did you have an issue with that then? You know, I'd like to know that, you know? Did you have an issue, you know, you brought the fact that we're in a deficit? Did you have an issue with spending $30,000 of taxpayers' monies to run candidates' parties that you knew weren't doing? That's $90,000 you guys threw down the hole, and you're worried about raises for city employees? You know, we're in the middle right now of putting together an event for inauguration day, and we have reached across both aisles, in Pratt, Republican, to try and start this new year with all this nonsense, you know? And now I've got to go and read on social media instead of taking you to his office? You got, you emailed him, you got an answer as to why there was a special meeting tonight? And yet, all three of you, you know, sign your names to a letter attacking our mayor? How does that look to the people of the town? Every time we look, you're attacking the mayor. How about just a half inch of positivity? You know, there's a lot of things that, as a councilman, you guys are doing amazing things for this town. Just once, I'd like to see positivity instead of, you know, he did this, he did that, he can't do this right. We're not even in elections yet, and it's this nasty in January? You know, we started in the new year, well, let's try to work together with each other, you know? Enough is enough. You know?
You good?
Your honor, I'd like to take a minute to respond to Mr. Howe's comments, if you don't mind. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Howe. I appreciate you being here and making the time tonight. In regard to your question about have I raised objections to meetings in the past, the answer is absolutely yes, and I could provide you with the emails to back that up. Sometimes, I work in East Hartford, Connecticut. On a good night, it takes about 35 minutes for me to get back to Bristol. On a night when there's a lot of rain or there's a lot of traffic, if I've got to try and make it back for a 5:00 meeting or a 5:30 meeting, it's almost impossible. I have to leave well before my day is done at my regular full-time job. So I have asked the mayor several times in the past to move a meeting back a half hour if an item could wait till a regular meeting, and I did that this time with the raises for elected officials specifically. And I'll give you briefly my reasoning why. I think it's important that members of the public taxpayers have a chance to weigh in on whether or not they think it's appropriate for elected officials in particular to be receiving an increase in their pay or their compensation. When it comes to other positions in the city that are not elected, rather full-time hires or full-time workers from the city, you know, I think it's good for people to weigh in in general, but I understand why sometimes circumstances require a vote outside of a special meeting. My objections to this meeting in particular were that the notice of the meeting had gone out just before holiday weekend. Now, the chair of this body didn't schedule the holiday, of course, I admit that, but with the timing of the holiday and the timing of this notice, I felt as though there wasn't quite enough notice for members of the public to be able to be aware of this meeting and be able to say, I have something to say about that. Now, what did I propose we do instead? I proposed we waited to take this issue up until the regular meeting next week, people are more generally aware of the regular meeting. So that was my rationale. When I was told in a sort of arbitrary way, the vote has to take place before January 4th, that didn't seem to me to be a decent excuse. It didn't seem to address my larger concerns of why we were having this meeting and the transparency issues. So, myself and two of my colleagues on this body wrote that statement, and we shared it with members of the public. So again, I thank you for your comments. I hope that helps you to understand a little bit more on my perspective, and I appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you. And the last thing I'll say before I yield the floor, your honor, when I came in about five minutes to five, the public participation sign-up sheet had not been out there yet. I suspect there are other members of the public who may want to take a moment to address the council, if you as the chair would be willing to oblige.
Item number one.
To approve salaries and benefits of full-time non-bargaining employees, eligible elected officials, salaries for part-time non-bargaining, appointed and elected officials for the next term, and to take the actions necessary.
Your honor, could we separate this into the various categories that are separated by a comma here, so that we're not voting on all of this as one item? I feel it's a little bit cumbersome the way it's listed.
Pick up whatever you want to pick up first, whatever you want to use.
I would make a motion to approve salaries and benefits for full-time non-bargaining employees.
Over to the second. Can you pass presented?
As presented, for discussion purposes at least, just.
As presented for discussion. Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
I'll start by saying that for anyone that's not familiar with the last time we did this, and I'm speaking to my council colleagues who weren't on the council the last time, the last term that I was on the council. The group of people that are full-time non-bargaining employees is only about 16 people, and I appreciate Mr. Howe's question earlier about, you know, who these people are and how much we're talking about. My understanding is that the raises that were presented to the salary committee are in line with what the unions received recently. In other words, we just recently voted to approve union contracts, and these are the same percentages. My objection several years ago, I don't remember what year, but the last time that we took up raises for the non-bargaining employees, is that for several of the people in this group of 16, some of them are the highest-paid employees that we have in the city or among the highest, certainly on the city side, I believe they're the highest-paid employees. And so when we apply a 2.5 or a 2.8 increase to their already quite generous salary, it's a much different kind of raise than it is for a laborer or a secretary that works in one of our union jobs. So I had made that comment several years ago, I didn't get much support for it. But another issue is something that I've raised with the unionized position, that we don't seem to ever take a look at the salary grades that we have for the folks in these categories as well as the unionized positions. And for instance, I believe there's a couple of positions in this group of 16 that are not at the right salary grade, that perhaps they should even be increased. But again, we don't do it individually, we don't have a discussion about how perhaps those jobs have changed or not changed. Instead, we're presented something that is basically, we want to give them the same raise we're giving the unions. There's no analysis of exactly why a particular salary grade is appropriate for the different levels of folks. So, that being said, again, in view of transparency, I do want folks to know that when we were advised of this meeting and we got our agenda, we didn't have the list of who those 16 people are and exactly what the increase was. I did ask for it after the meeting was posted and I received it, but again, for the public, they don't have that document. So I understand their frustration. It is only 16 people. This is not something that's going to break the bank.
Councilwoman did 17, but the person that wasn't on your list is Rob Longbow.
Okay.
Just, I want to just make sure.
Well, Superintendent Waters is on my list.
Oh, okay.
But in any case, however many, it's a small number of people. So I just, again, in view of transparency, wanted to state that for the record. I think the last time I did vote no, I planned to vote yes today for these raises, because again, I'm not opposed to the raises, I am opposed to some of the process that we do to get to this point.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, this is a raise, this is a motion to give all full-time non-bargaining employees the proposed raise. A package.
And I do have, I do have one question, just for clarification, that we're talking about doing retroactive for the first part of this, and then the second one would take effect in July?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly.
Yes, just as we did with the BPSA, this is retro to July 1 of 2016?
Correct.
And then the new raise will take effect?
Next July 1st.
July of 17.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Clarification, this is for all non-bargaining employees?
Full-time.
Full-time, full-time only.
The first comma in our, in item one.
All in favor? All opposed, motion passes. How about if we do salaries for non, for part-time non-bargaining next? Can I have a motion to approve sal, to approve, to approve as presented salaries for part-time non-bargaining?
I'll vote a second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Is that only two positions here?
I believe so, yes. Yes, this is.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Diane, what's the difference between eligible elected officials and appointed elected officials for next term?
So the next piece was for that other sheet, elected officials, which includes the mayor, the council, there's some appointed people, the part-time corporation council, the local emergency manager.
Okay, so that would be?
That list.
That would be eligible elected officials to take effect next term?
Well, the eligible elected officials piece was actually in discussion about the benefits piece. I don't know if they're going to take the non-bargaining benefits package. You approved the wage increases for non-bargaining, but are you also approving the proposed insurance, the benefits package as well?
Yes, we did.
For non-bargaining, yes, but in terms of elected officials, we've done nothing with elected officials.
Okay.
And we don't have any, just, at least the council has no packet about elected officials, so we don't even know who's on that list.
Okay, actually, there was a sheet on the elected officials.
It was not forwarded to council. Or appointed, we didn't have appointed officials either, any lifting for them?
Yep, it's a draft salary schedule. I think it was in your packet. It's got mayor, city council, treasurer, board of assessment appeals, registrar voters, assistant court counsel, court counsel and director of civil preparedness.
All right, I don't have it, but I understand.
So those are the elected and part-time appointed.
To the chair, Ms. Ferguson, could you list the appointed one more time, please?
Sure. Appointed is assistant corporation counsel and part-time corporation counsel and director of civil preparedness.
When do you do them next?
So that's separate from?
Right, so let's do them.
Let's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so a motion to approve the appointed officials, and that was? Repeat that again, please.
Assistant court counsel, part-time court counsel and director of civil preparedness.
So those two, to approve, to approve the wage and salary, the salaries and benefits as presented. Can I have that motion?
So.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Your honor, for clarification, that's 2.8, again, is that correct?
Yeah.
2.8 and then 2.5.
Right.
Who was given the same?
Right, right, right.
Like the same benefit changes and hardship changes?
Actually, they're not benefits for those people.
Okay. I understand, break it.
For benefits.
All in favor? All opposed, motion passes. So that now just leaves Diane, the elected officials, is that correct?
Yes.
And before you sit down, who are those elected officials that were adopted?
Mayor, city council, city treasurer, chairman, board of assessment appeals, and member of board of assessment appeals and registrar voters.
Can I also have, make motion to approve the appointed non-bargaining, which was the assistant corporation counsel, corporation counsel. I think that was the question.
That's what we just said.
Thank you.
Okay, so, for discussion only, a motion to approve, to approve the raises for elected officials.
So moved.
Motion made, wait a second. Second, discussion.
Your honor, I'll begin. My objection to raises for elected officials is twofold. The first is that, of course, I believe, especially when it comes to this body, leadership sort of comes from the top and you set the example from the top, and it's no secret to all of us sitting here together that the state of Connecticut and much of the world is edging in on some financial insecurity over the next several months and the coming year. And I anticipate, knowing the strong tradition of thoughtful financial management in the city of Bristol, that we may run into a position where we'd have to be very thoughtful about raises and salaries and new hires and that whole gamut. So therefore, I would like for this body to be able to make a good faith effort to show the city employees and the taxpayers especially, that we are willing, even if it's in a small part, to share in the, to share in the pain, so to speak, of giving up a raise. People everywhere have to do that when times get tough, and I think it's important for this body to be willing to go out on a limb and say, we will not give unto ourselves in a time when belts are getting tighter everywhere, including in the city of Bristol. So that is why I will be voting no on raises for elected officials this evening.
Any other discussion?
Yes, your honor, if I may. I wasn't here. The last time this discussion took place in 2008, just before my first term, I believe, of being elected. And at that time, I know that the same crises were apparent, and I know that the mayor ward at that time proposed a 3%, that he proposed, or you proposed, or someone proposed a 3% reduction, and they increased it to 5%. And the mayor took the 5% reduction, and the council took the 5% reduction, and I know it made a huge difference of $400 for the council for over two years. And the mayor, I guess, was like $5,000 over that time period. As a councilperson, I know that it's going to look, either way we do this, I mean, anyone that's doing this job for the amount of money that you're doing it for shouldn't be doing the job in the first place, because the amount of money doesn't make any difference, and certainly a $400 difference in pay is not going to make any difference to myself, for sure. I will speak on behalf of the mayor, because not the mayor can, the mayor's position. I believe the CEO of an organization should have a salary that's equal or above other members of the organization. I think it's a very important position, the mayor's position, and I believe that that position warrants a raise to bring it to a level that it should be, that it should be brought to. Again, I don't think it's a question of the dollar mill, and symbolism obviously is very important, and at this time, obviously, with the budget, the way that it's going to be, whether it be the local budget, whether it be the state budget, or the federal budget, we can make that argument forever. As far as the council is concerned, I couldn't care less, to be honest, whether or not a raise is granted to the council or not granted to the council. But I do believe that the mayor's position deserves a raise. Thank you.
Your honor, if I may, as well. Yeah, I'm going to side with Councilman Mills as well, speaking about the position of the mayor, and please note that this would take effect in next election cycle, so whoever is sitting in that chair, the position absolutely needs to be upgraded, absolutely, in my opinion. Again, the chief executive officer of a multimillion-dollar organization such as the city of Bristol needs to keep pace with some of these department heads in there to get a raise. So I'm in full support of raising the mayor, you know, the mayor's position, pay grade. With regard to the city council, I've been waiting for this for a long time. I don't even care if we get paid or not, I'd love to give it up. I'd like to take a vote tonight that all the city council members give up their pay, because it's tidly at first to begin with. So whether we get a raise or not, doesn't bother me. It doesn't bother me. If everyone here wants a raise, well, I'll vote yes for a raise. If you don't want a raise, I won't vote for a raise. And you know what? If you really step up to the plate and vote to forfeit your salary, I'll vote for that too. So whatever way the wind blows.
Your honor, I'd just like to say one more thing. You know, I don't know if there's ever a good time. If you're an elected official and you're going to give yourself a raise, it's like, who does that? Well, elected officials, I guess. No one ever goes in and votes for their own raise. It's normally warranted somehow. So, again, I think it's a difficult position to put in, I think, the amount of money that we're talking about. And again, I think the other thing, the critical thing, is that it's for the next election cycle. It has nothing to do with what you're presently making, it's whoever gets elected next time would be the beneficiary of the, of the raise. Okay, so that's all.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'd like to agree with what Councilman DeMato has already said, and I think it's important to keep in mind that everybody that we just voted for tonight is getting the same increase, 2.8%. And when you're talking about the small amount that council received, it's actually only a difference of $270 per year. So it's really just a ceremony of giving us some kind of credence for the work that we do up here, and I agree with Councilman DeMato, it really doesn't make much of a difference. If we vote to get rid of the salary, I would still be here, however, it's just really an appreciation of the amount of work that goes into helping to run this city.
Any other discussion?
Yes, your honor. I'm not in favor of these raises, and I just want to counter just a little bit something Councilman Mills said. You know, he was talking about the stature of the office, and I guess, I guess all of the, several council people mentioned the idea that somehow the mayor's position needs to be in line with department heads. And actually, I think the opposite may be true. I think some of our department heads have advanced degrees that give them specific knowledge about the fields of expertise that they work for in the city. I mean, we have corporation councils, full-time corporation council people are lawyers. In other words, they went to college and they went to law school, and they wouldn't be eligible to work in those positions if they didn't have those advanced degrees. And we have engineers, likewise, et cetera, and the list goes on. So quite frankly, they are actually positions that often are more, you know, they have more expertise required for those positions than they do the mayor. So just, in any case, I will be voting no.
Any other discussion?
Your honor, just one more thing now that education was brought up. Councilwoman Fordyard brings up a good point, however, the requirement for mayor doesn't require that he or she have, which is, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but it's not a requirement to have, you know, a grad school education, a bachelor's degree, or anything of that nature. At this point, being the chief executive officer of the city, that's a qualification itself. Bills get paid, people get paid, the city operates. Well, someone's doing, you know, whatever your opinion is, someone's doing a hell of a job, we can maintain the city, that's experience enough, he or she, whoever sits in that seat. So as far as the chief executive officer position or the mayor position, in my opinion, it warrants a raise, regardless of education. If we want to make this, you know, a debate about education, which maybe at one point there should be, well, maybe that would be an interesting discussion, but right now, I'm looking at the position as a person, you know, as an individual, of the amount that they have to control, what they have to operate, the flat they need to take, the calls they need to make, the calls they need to take, what they have to put up with, what he or she's family may or may have to put up with, it warrants a raise, and that's for anyone, whether it's Ken or anyone else sitting there. They deserve a raise.
So let me jump in here. First of all, let me say, it's already been said, these raises don't take effect until next election, so all of us may be sitting up here, none of us may be sitting up here. But that's to be determined by the, by the people next, next election, so these raises will not take effect till then. I served on the council for three terms. I know the work the council puts in, I appreciate all the work my council did at your council meetings that you attend, the phone calls that you get from constituents, the emails. I was there, I got those calls as a councilman, getting the call at 10:00 at night that, you know, my driveway's not, my road's not plowed, or whatever it may be, so. As small a raise it is, I think the council deserves it. The council took a cut six years ago, never got back any of that. We took a 5% cut six years ago, and never since then have a raise been given, been given. It's never a good time for anyone elected to give a raise, but in a year that all unions are getting raises, because everyone has suffered, and Councilman Brown, I agree with you, we do have a tight budget, we've had a tight budget for the last 10 years with the economy going down. That being said, we just settled a union contract with BPSA for the same exact raises, we're in negotiations with two other contracts right now for the same exact contracts that we're proposing, and we've done police and fire. Police got a four-year contract, fire got a two-year contract. So we can afford a small raise, we're not talking about a lot of money, and I will be in support of this for next term. Any other discussion?
Your honor. Your honor, why don't you shed light on what the, what the amount of the raises altogether will be?
Well, for just the elected officials?
For the elected officials.
For just the elected, well, we're, for one year, which is $270, $280, times six.
$270.
And for mayor, it's approximately $2,500, so we're probably looking at $4,000, give or take a few dollars, over one year, with a city that has a $200 million budget. We're not talking about a million dollars. So, you know, and the work that all, all the council puts in, I think you deserve it. I think we all deserve a lot more, but we have to be realistic. So I will support the raise. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? No. Two noes, motion passes. Item number two. Wait, did we cover everything off of that number one?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I don't know.
So can I just confirm, because a couple of things I just want to make sure, for clarification, is that the full-time elected officials, which really means the mayor and the registrar voters, that the insurance changes will apply to those officials?
voters, that the insurance changes will apply to those officials as of the start of their term as well? And that, I don't know if that was part of the motion? That's what was presented in the packet.
Yeah.
And also to confirm that the, the two chiefs, which are their non-bargaining employees, that these raises don't apply to them because they are under employment contracts. So the insurance will be as proposed for them, and the raises are already done by the.
Do you need a motion for the two chiefs?
I think that's proposed. That's proposed. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. Thank you.
Item, item number two.
To approve the addition of one electromechanic position and one process operator transitional position at water pollution control effective July 1, 2017, and to take any action as necessary.
So moved. Second. Do we have a motion?
I should read that.
Oh, that's okay. The salary committee unanimously recommends to the city council to approve the addition of one electromechanical maintenance technician position, local number 1338, code 10, at 2475 per hour to 2762 per hour, and one process operator transitional position, local number 1338, code 6, $20.15 per hour to 2249 per hour, at water pollution control effective July 1, 2017, and to refer to the board of finance for informational purposes.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing on all in favor. I oppose, motion passes. Item number three.
To authorize mayor Kenneth B. Cane or acting mayor to sign any and all city of Bristol land use permits associated with construction, parking lot modifications and building improvements at the Department of Public Works transfer station at 685 Lake Avenue, to take any action as necessary.
So moved. Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing on all in favor. I oppose, motion passes. Item number four.
To authorize mayor Kenneth B. Cane or acting mayor to sign any and all city of Bristol land use permits associated with construction, parking lot modifications and walking path at the city of Bristol Senior Center Probate Court Health Department facility at 240 Stafford Avenue, to take any action as necessary.
So moved. Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing on all in favor. I oppose, motion passes. Item number five.
To rescind the resolution adopted at the December 13, 2016 city council meeting and adopt the modified resolution regarding programs to enter into a federal fiscal year 2016 state homeland security grant program, region three memorandum of agreement with the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security, to take any action as necessary. Anything attached to your agendas today, the resolution?
I read it. The inherent result of the city of, city council, the city of Bristol, Connecticut, may enter into with, and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for federal fiscal year 2016 state homeland security grant program region three memorandum of agreement, including any and all documents which it deems to be necessary and appropriate, and be further resolved that Kenneth B. Cane, mayor of the city of Bristol, or the acting mayor is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the city council of the city of Bristol, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by substantial, be further resolved, this matter be referred to board of finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Your honor, just for a point of information, do we have to take two separate votes, one to rescind and one to adopt?
If you adopt it, if the actual first part of this motion was to rescind it, so it would correct what had happened earlier in this motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Rule call, Senator Fordruff.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion passed. Motion for adjournment. So moved. Second. Motion made, seconded.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity for one second, what is the exact process for being able to speak? I was here at 20 of, asked for the sheet, came to the front, was told there was no sheet, it wasn't on the agenda, just for future.
Sign-up sheet outside there.
It wasn't there, and that's the reason I'm asking, so, just for clarity.
Sign-up sheet outside there. Thank you. All in favor, adjournment. I oppose, motion passes.